I have 7:01, and so let's get ourselves underway here. This is the Planning Board meeting, Town of West Newbury, for Tuesday, November 7th. As I mentioned, it's 7:01. And why don't we just quickly go around and introduce ourselves to some names I don't quite recognize? I'm Brian Murphy, the Chair.
Ray Cook, planning board member.
Ann Bardine, that's okay, Ann Bardine, Planning Board member.
Deb Hamilton, Planning Board member.
And our town planner?
Sue Brown, town planner.
There you go, thank you. Okay, so the first item of business tonight is to discuss, and I believe we should be voting, on the 87 Crane Neck special permits for both reduced frontage lot and a common driveway. Excuse me, Sue, do you have any opinion as to which one we should tackle first?
Yes, I believe the reduced frontage lot.
Okay, well, I think I guessed wrong, I have to dig that one out here. That's okay.
I could be overruled, this is my, this is my first rodeo.
You're doing great, please, you know. So, I thought we could, I mean, we certainly can go through the entire document that Sue prepared, but also what we certainly need is to discuss the findings of fact and the conditions on that. Is everyone okay with that, or do you really want to just start and look through the entire document?
No, I don't think that's necessary. A good chunk of it consists of a kind of a reiteration of the narrative of what happened in various discussions.
Right, well, that was my feeling, but you know, this is a democracy, so.
My opinion.
Sounds like a good approach, Brian.
Yeah, all right. So, Sue, can you pull up the reduced frontage? I think it's on page 5 where we start with the findings. Excuse me, still have a lingering cough a little bit, so I apologize in advance.
Give me one moment.
Sure. Page 2.
Let me know if you can see it.
Yes.
And if it's appropriately sized.
I think so.
Okay, and you'd like me to go to the findings?
Yes, that was on page 5, as I had it.
Yes.
All right, so we all, I think, are familiar with the findings that we're obligated to review and consider before we vote on a special permit. Think I should read them, Sue?
I think that's up to you, I think that's completely appropriate.
Okay, so this is in Section 11.2.6 of the West Newbury zoning bylaw, and that does reference the adjusted zoning bylaw, correct, Sue?
I believe it wa, I believe it should, because we still haven't received final approval from the Attorney General's, I'll just have to double check on that, that's why I have not filled it in.
Yeah.
And we are not.
They certainly put us at the bottom of the pile.
Well, I think we were a little bit delinquent in getting it in, and I think that when we sent it in, there was a problem with one of the sheets that the newspaper had sent us a wrong date, so I think we tumbled to the bottom of the pile. I understand we will expect approval early in the year.
Okay, all right. So anyway, this, these are the findings of fact that we always have to refer back to in looking at a special permit, to either approve or deny. It's A, the specific site is an appropriate location for the use of structure; B, the use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood; C, there will not be an undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians; and adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation of the proposed use, structure, or condition; D, the proposed use of structure will be in harmony with the general purpose of this bylaw; and E, the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, or any other municipal system to such an extent that the requested use or a developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of town, of the town, will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. Excuse me. So now we can move to the conditions that would, whoops, wait a minute. I can't move that, there you go. So, board members, I'll just read it, and then, you know, I think we should just, you know, if anybody has a question or a comment on this, just speak up. A, there will be no further subdivision of Lot 1 or Lot 2 as shown on said plan. I expected that.
Yeah.
B, Lot 1 and Lot 2 on said plan shall be labeled "No Further Subdivision" on the plan.
Yeah.
And I think that's on the plan. C, in accordance with West Newbury zoning bylaws, Section 5.2.8, a reduced frontage lot created by special permit shall not be further subdivided, reduced in area, and/or changed in size or shape. Planning Board shall require a recorded deed restriction setting forth this restriction in perpetuity to ensure that the aforementioned criteria shall be provided to the planning board. And D, this agreement shall be binding upon the executor's heirs and assigns and successors in title of the owner. And E, is project construction shall be limited to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday; Saturdays, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Construction during the evening on Sundays and all holidays expressly prohibited. Oh, I see, and that was your comment, Sue, right, about do we need, do we actually need this?
Yes, since this is, this is actually not for the, this is just for the reduced frontage lot, so I didn't know if that was needed.
At the end, I can't see, that's all that's scrolled down so far. Oh, no, there are more, okay.
That's the end of E.
Okay.
So, do, do we think we need this? Should we eliminate E, board members?
I think that's probably more appropriate for the common driveway.
Yeah, I agree, okay. So we'll delete that in due course. Excuse me. The next one, which will now be E, prior to endorsement of plan, the following shall be done. One, the applicant shall make a notation of the plans, which references the conditions and dates of this certificate of vote. Two, lots 1 and 2 on said plan, on said plan, shall be labeled "No Further Subdivision."
You've now said that three times, so I don't know.
Yeah, we, I was looking to see if we somehow went back up, right?
Yeah.
The first two are stating a fact or a condition, and the third, and this one is saying, "And you need to put it on the plan itself," you need to.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
And I'm not, if there's a better way, so it's not redundant, I'm happy to see that. As I mentioned, I've looked at past decisions, and this is how it was written, but it does seem redundant, I agree.
Well, talking about past decisions, is this the most recent reduced frontage lot we've approved? That seems odd to me. Anyway, that's kind of a rhetorical question for now, but it may be worth a little bit of research.
We haven't done a lot of them recently.
But that's 19 years ago, that doesn't make sense.
That doesn't make sense.
Okay, well, we can look into that.
Let's see, F, the endorsed plan together with a signed copy of this certificate of vote shall be recorded at the registry of deeds. We record, there's a spelling error there.
There you go, in the next line.
Recorded.
And then I think it should be one copy of each of the above.
Thank you.
And I think this, we'll see farther down, but this is at odds with a further comment, so that's fine, we'll pick that up.
Planning Board, one copy of each of the above shall be. What was that?
Sorry, the word "recorded," it says "recorded."
Goodness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
G, and as built or record conditions plan shall be provided to the planning board upon completion of the project. H, in accordance with West Newbury zoning bylaws, Section 11.2.8, this approval which has been granted by the planning board shall expire within two years from the grant thereof if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. And I, no alteration of these plans shall be made or affected other than by affirmative vote of four or more members of the board at a duly posted meeting and upon issuance of a written amended decision.
So going back to what we said before about which version of the bylaw about numbering, again, we'll have to, you know, this gets tricky, because I don't know if this is that in the new version, or is that the old version, taking from an old decision?
So this is, this is from the recodified, the updated numbered version. All the numbers, the letters, the numbers that I've put in there are reflected of that, and I think I just need to get advice on council on how to say what, and it may say "as voted at annual town meeting."
Okay, great, as long as it's consistent, that's fine.
Said one observation, could you scroll back up to the prior page, the bottom of it there? It said this agreement shall be binding, I think it should be these conditions shall be binding.
Good job, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't think you, I don't think you had any other questions on there, Sue, is that correct?
I did not have any other questions.
So, before we move on, Anne, is it worth discussing now about the, I'm surprised that we hadn't seen?
For instance, what about, I don't remember if, I know Cook had some common driveways, because I remember the lapsing business, and I can't remember if any of those were reduced frontage or not, but I think, I think this should be looked into, this brings me to sort of a bigger question. We're gonna take a vote tonight on, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down on these two special permits, but what is actually the timeframe on finalizing the language of the two decisions? Aren't those two different matters?
Yes, so you have 90 days from the date that the meeting closed to submit the decision to the town clerk.
Right.
So, while you can vote on it, it's, so that clock is already running, because you closed it at an earlier meeting. So we have a full nine, you have a full 90 days.
So in other words, I think we have some time to massage the specific language, as long as, you know, the applicant doesn't have a problem with that one way or the other. But I don't need to iron out every little bit of language.
Right, I think, yeah, and that's a good point. I mean, I think the idea is to, you know, make sure that the general conditions, whether there's some wordsmithing in here, which I think is what we're talking about.
Yes.
But that the tone and scope of the conditions that we place on this, I don't see how that really will be changed.
Right, agreed.
Okay, okay, all right. So, do the board members wish to have any further discussion on this? Otherwise, I think we could take a vote on this. Let's see if other board members have a, wish to make a comment. All right.
Brian?
Yes, I'm sorry, I can't see you over there.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, yeah.
Well, no, that's, that's just my screen thing, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just, could somebody reassure me again about this? Well, this is for reduced frontage.
Yes.
Okay, I've got a question, yeah, okay. That, that's fine. I will have a question about the common driveway.
All right, I move to approve the application for reduced frontage lot at 87 Crane Neck Street per the application and the findings and conditions as so enumerated.
I second it.
Board comments? All right, all those in favor? Brian Murphy, aye.
Ann Bardine, aye.
Ray Cook, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
And I saw Tim Cronin's hand, is that correct?
Yes, Tim Cronin.
Yes. The vote is 5-0 in the affirmative. And we can move on to the common driveway. Ray, did you, before we move, get into that in the same detail, did you want to talk any about a general issue with the common drives, or wait for a specific condition?
With this specific application?
You mean, within a specific condition that we have in here for the common driveway, or something in general? Because I'm now prepared to move on to the common driveway special permit.
Yeah, we can move on to the common driveway, and then, then I can talk.
Okay, Sue, can you call up, bring up the common driveway? Pardon. I have it on page 5 and 6, the commentary.
Can you see this one?
Yeah, it's a little smaller.
Okay. Let me see if I.
Yes, I think we want to start at waivers. Okay, this will be Section 5 under waivers, and I will read these. Excuse me, just a moment. Relative to Section 7.D.7 of the zoning bylaws that requires common driveway dimensions and construction meet the requirements of minor roadway standards. A, the planning board grants a waiver of the requirement for a paved 20-foot travelway width. In place thereof, a gravel driveway with a minimum width of 14 feet is required. B, the planning board grants a waiver of the requirement for a 6-inch paved surface. In place thereof, a gravel driveway is allowed. C, the planning board grants a waiver of the requirement for a 2% driveway cross slope. In place thereof, a gravel driveway of varying cross slopes as exists or to be developed is allowed. Any comments on this from board members?
I believe that's what we discussed.
I think so, but, to save my voice, I'm not going to reread the findings of fact, but they are the same that we had just discussed moments ago on the reduced frontage application. Oh, wait a minute, I should read one item on it, though.
An additional.
Yeah. The planning board makes the following findings pursuant to Section 9.8 and as required by Section 11.2.6 of the West Newbury zoning bylaw dated, amended dated, and amended date. So we, Section 9.8, are those meant to have dates inserted, Sue?
Yes, same as, same as before, I will put those in.
You'll insert the dates, okay, thank you. A, the common driveway provides a reasonable public benefit which would not otherwise be obtained without, that should be "use," not "us," of a common driveway. Said benefits include the reduction in the number of curb openings on Crane Neck Street and protection of significant natural features, parentheses, wetland resources, and parentheses, which can be avoided by provision of a common driveway.
That's kind of a confusing sentence, because the protections aren't avoided. Damage, any damage is avoided, so we need a different word instead of avoided. Which are, why don't we just say, provided by, which are, which are provided by the use of a common driveway? Something like that, anyway, the word avoided. You don't want to necessarily buy, say, provision, but we can figure that out later.
Okay, no, good, good point, Dan, thank you. The remaining items on here are exactly the same, the findings that guide us in doing a special permit. Excuse me, you can scroll, go up, Sue, if you could scroll.
Am I going in the right direction for you?
Yep, you are.
Okay, good.
My eyes were not. This is a Section 7, conditions. And again, if board members wish to talk about each one as I read them, just give me a heads up. A, no more than three residential lots shall ever be served by the common driveway. B, the length of the common driveway shall not be used to satisfy zoning frontage requirements. C, any easement or easement conditions obtained by the property owners over in a budding lot shall be subject to approval of the planning board. D, the planning board shall require covenant restrictions for the proper maintenance of common driveways by all affected property owners. All covenants and deed restrictions shall be recorded at the registry of deeds Essex County South referenced on the plan. E, the Town of West Newbury is not responsible for repair, maintenance, plowing, or snow and ice control of the common driveway. This is the responsibility of the owners and shall be noted in the common driveway maintenance covenant as in perpetuity. F, future lot owners shall not petition the board of selectmen for repair, maintenance, plowing, or, that should be "snow," and ice control of the common driveway. This condition shall be noted in the common driveway maintenance covenant as in perpetuity. G, house numbers for each lot shall be posted at the intersection of the common driveway and the private driveway. H, this agreement shall be binding upon the executor's heirs and assigns and successors in title of the owner. I, project construction shall be limited to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday; Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Construction during the evening on Sundays and all holidays is expressly prohibited. J, prior to the endorsement of plan, the following shall be done. One, the applicant shall make a notation on the plans, which references the conditions and dates of this certificate of vote. Two, lots 1 and 2 on said plan shall be labeled "No Further Subdivision." K, the endorsed plan together with a signed copy of this certificate of vote shall be recorded at the registry of deeds. Three, recorded, there's spelling there. Three recorded copies of the above shall be submitted to the planning board prior to any work on the site. One, one copy of the above shall also be submitted to the town clerk. L, an as-built or record conditions plan shall be provided to the planning board upon completion of the project. And Sue, your question there was, is this just for completion of the common driveway?
Yes, or is it, is it, I assume, this doesn't have anything to do with a potential building, but is, once the common driveway is completed, I just wanted to confirm that, so people are sure when it's due.
I would replace the word "project" with "common driveway," and ambiguous.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ray, that's good. Okay, M, in accordance with West Newbury zoning bylaws, Section 11.2.8, this approval which has been granted by the planning board shall expire within two years from the grant thereof if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. And no alteration of these plans shall be made or affected other than by affirmative vote of four or more members of the board at a duly posted meeting and upon issuance of a written amended decision. And there we have it.
The only thing I saw, Brian, is that in H, I think it refers to agreement, so it should say these conditions shall be binding.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
Well done, thank you. Other comments by board members?
Yes.
Yes, Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, I note that the public hearing is closed, but I believe, am I correct, Brian, we can still discuss some things here before the vote?
Oh, we certainly can, absolutely.
So, let me start off by saying that I agree with these conditions, and I agree with the findings. The only thing, and you know, I think a common driveway is the best solution for this particular site. I'm still uncomfortable, though, whether it's been sufficiently demonstrated to us that, let's see, I want to get the language exactly right here. See, common driveways is now 7D. That each lot frontage must also provide the possibility of reasonable practical access without using a common driveway. I'm still, I'm still uncomfortable with that detail. Like I said, I think that the common driveway would make sense. I agree with all the findings, that this, you know, is in harmony with the intent of the bylaws, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just, I'm just haven't been convinced yet, and I'm hoping that one of the, that you or one of the other planning board members can reassure me that, that we've done our due diligence here.
Well, I'll give you a couple of thoughts on that, and see if other board members, or Sue, we should speak up. It's my understanding that, and you may be referencing the fact of, you know, the order, an order of conditions or whatever to cross wetlands. You know, that the ConCon would be very reluctant to merely issue an order of conditions for a project that they would not expect to be constructed. My understanding was that there was an informal discussion with the conservation agent in that there could in fact be a driveway built across those wetlands to access the house, the existing house. And so I think, for me, that's what I'm relying on in, you know, looking at what I believe you're talking about. So, and perhaps Sue can weigh in on this as well.
So, my weighing in will just be to remind the board of Town Council's opinion regarding this, and just reading in part from her email that she sent, it says that she does not, that, that does not prevent the planning board from acting on the pending application relative to 87 Crane Neck for reduced frontage lot permit or a common driveway special permit. I'm paraphrasing here, she said it would only impact an application for a common driveway special permit if an order of conditions is needed to accomplish the access. However, since the common driveway already exists, an order of conditions is not needed.
I think that, you know, I, I'm not saying that we need the order of conditions, you know, although... You know, although that would clear it up because it's specifically mentioned, I understand why we don't have one and why frankly, it's kind of unreasonable to try to get one for something that's not going to be built. So, you know, and, and just because what would become the common driveway already exists. I'm, I'm still, I'm, I'm somewhat reassured, Brian, by you saying that, you know, you, you could construct a driveway over the wetlands.
Yes. People do bridges.
Yeah, yeah. I, I guess I'm, I'm frustrated with the, what appears to me to be a term of art, a legal term. You know, is, is it up to us to say that building a bridge across the wetlands or some other means like that constitutes reasonable practical access? And here, you know, if we, if, if our resident lawyer, Tim, could weigh in, maybe that would reassure me.
Yeah, I had the same question, Ray, and I went back and forth a little bit with Sue. And Sue just read the opinion of council, which kind of gave me some assurance. You know, the question's a good one. And as I understand it, because the driveway is already there and no order of conditions is required for that access over the driveway, that we, you know, that access question is answered and their condition is satisfied.
Yeah, but that's, that's one driveway that exists.
Right.
Right? But with the common driveway bylaw, the way I read it, it says, you can do the common driveway, but you, you have to, you have to also have reasonable practical access without the common driveway. So we've, we've got one existing driveway, fair enough. There would have to be two of them, which means that an additional driveway would have to be built. And that that, what, whatever we would do there, a bridge or some other structure, box covert or something, that that, you know, I mean, that's not going to be cheap. It's not going to be easy. And, and the question is, is that reasonable and practical? You see what I'm saying? I'm frustrated by.
I do.
I, I, it is, it's a, it's a, yes, I, I understand where your thoughts are.
I, I, you know, I'm, I'm a structural civil engineer who teaches bridge design.
Yeah.
I know you can do it.
But is it reasonable and practical?
Exactly. Exactly. And you know, I mean, in some ways it is because it's not a big span and, you know, you can have all these things precast. You compare the abutments ahead of time and, you know, you could, you could drop the bridge in there really fast. But it, you know, it would be expensive and, you know, preparing the abutments. So yeah, so that's my question.
So I think case law says it is the, it is the responsibility of the planning board to make that determination of reasonable practical access. And I think if you do look at your, for example, your A and R book, which talks a lot about reasonable practical access, and we have the additional possibility of reasonable practical access. I think wetlands is generally not a reason to, is not a, not a deterrent or it's not a, a hard stop, like for example, a cliff face is or something else that truly restricts access.
Yeah, my problem is I, I know too much engineering. I mean, like you, you could even, you know, get through a cliff face, right?
The old boring machines.
There's a ton of ways to do it. There's, you know.
They don't need to go there.
But some of the, some of the cases that I remember from the past, from that old A and R handbook, and what was his name who was the guru of all that stuff, had to do with things like the guardrail of a state highway. That's not going away.
Remember that one?
Some kind of big escarpment. That's not going away. I think, I mean, imagine, Ray, that there were no way to get into a huge piece of land at all other than, you know, reconstructing some wetland somewhere and building some kind of a bridge. Then one might argue that that would be practical because otherwise the entire thing is, is unable to be used. I don't know. I'm trying to kind of push the edges here and see.
Yeah.
Convince myself to.
This came in this afternoon and you didn't look at it. I wasn't here.
Judy, Judy Marshall, if you could just, yeah.
There you go. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Well, that, that, this is, this is my hesitation.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think you're, yeah, you're going to have to vote how you, you honestly feel, you know, about it with the facts that we have at hand. You know, for, for me, the facts that we, you know, the town council weighed in and gave a considered opinion that, that gives me comfort on this. But.
Yep, yep. I, I got you. I am, you know, I am looking through the, the A and R handbook. Well, you, you don't, that's, yeah.
That was Bobrowski, wasn't it, Ann?
Yeah.
Bobrowski, Mark Bobrowski. Yes.
I think so, but I'm even thinking of somebody else that used to write this.
So there, while Ray is kind of pondering.
I am.
Are there other questions from the board members as to the, the conditions and/or the waivers as we've discussed here?
No, just to remind folks that we will have to see the covenants for, you know, we'd have to see covenants for the maintenance of the driveway. And that's another document that'll have to be hashed out as this moves forward.
I, I wouldn't imagine that's a difficult lift.
No.
With, with.
A lot of those, yeah, there are a lot of those out there.
Ray, you gonna be okay if I call for a vote here? I mean, not, I don't want to know, but I'm just saying, are you comfortable with proceeding?
Yeah, I appreciate your, your asking. Let me just, give me one minute here. Another question about adequacy of way. I appreciate it. I realize we got, we got, you know, 20 people here and everybody's just waiting for me to.
Well, I think, I realize they're, they're here probably for the Housing Opportunities Initiative.
Yeah.
I know, but it's important. It's important stuff. Certainly, it's important to the applicants.
All right, go ahead.
All right. I, I move to approve the special permit for common driveway at 87 Crane Neck Street with the waivers and conditions as noted in decision and discussed here tonight. Do I have a second?
I second it.
There's a my, um, any further discussion before I call for a vote? All right, I'm not hearing any comments. Brian Murphy, aye.
Ann Gardein, aye.
Deb Hamilton.
Oh, good. Deb Hamilton, aye.
Kim Cronin, aye. Ray, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Ray Cook, aye.
The vote is five zero in approval of the special permit application for the common driveway at 87. And Sue, I, do I need to close the hearing here or, and we'll just deal with the, this? Or do we keep this open for us to discuss?
The hearing has already been closed.
The public side, yes.
Yep, this would just show up on a new, on the next agenda, just to finalize.
As we work through a couple of these wordsmith matters.
Yeah.
Very good. All right. Thank you. I see Mr. Spaulding is on board.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Paul, for your comments. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Williams from Williamson Sparages. Thank you. Okay. Pardon me. So let's move on. We have our next item on the agenda is the Housing Opportunities Initiative. This is a presentation and discussion of the concept plans and draft zoning regulations with Dodson and Flinker, the consultants. This is for the MBTA Housing Opportunities Legislation that's before the town. And we have Peter Flinker here and Dylan Sussman, I believe. Yes. Gentlemen, floor is yours.
All right. Thanks for having us. Happy to be here tonight and share the, the work, the work in progress. So I'm going to share my. All right. So we're here tonight to share work in progress on the Housing Opportunities Initiative, the MBTA Communities Zoning. There's a public forum next week on the 15th, so we envision this mostly as a opportunity for the planning board to get introduced to the zoning and give us initial comments so that we can revise it before the public forum next week. So I'm going to introduce just MBTA communities for anybody who hasn't been involved thus far. For many of you, this is going to be old news. So MBTA Communities Law is the change to the state law, section 3A of the zoning code. Has a change to the zoning, has a change to the state law. It, it applies to every community and it requires things from the community, whether they want to do them or not, to be in compliance with the law. It also adds compliance guidelines, which were adopted by EOHLC, which set forth additional clarifications and requirements for exactly how a community knows its adopted zoning that's in compliance with the law. It applies to 177 communities. West Newbury is designated as an adjacent small town, which means compliance with the law is less onerous than it would be for a rapid transit community or an adjacent community. All MBTA communities must have at least one zoning district that allows multifamily housing by right. And multifamily housing is defined as a building with three or more residential dwellings or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building. So you could have a single lot with two duplexes on it. That would be four units. That's considered multifamily. Or you could have a single lot with one building with three units in it or more. But those are the minimums. The minimum gross density for a compliant zone is 15 units per acre. The definition of gross density is somewhat complicated. It's set forth by the zoning statute and includes things like right-of-way and publicly owned land. But at the same time, the MBTA sets out a definition of what kind of land is considered developable, which excludes wetlands and other lands that are truly not developable. So what 15 units per acre is, is, is complicated. West Newbury has to zone for multifamily unit capacity of equal to at least 5% of the total number of existing housing units as of this 2020 census, which means you have to zone for a minimum of 87 multifamily units. At 15 units per acre, that means zoning for a minimum of 5.8 acres. So that's, that's the overview of MBTA communities. And we've had several public forums. I think we've had three public forums at this point, several meetings with the planning board through which we've, you know, worked through a process of identifying appropriate sites for the zoning and appropriate characteristics for the districts, which included looking at concept plans for specific sites. So at this point, the, the planning board has narrowed consideration down to just two sites. One of them is called the Dunn Site. It's the former Dunn Greenhouse property. And the other is the Knapp Site, which is the former Knapp Greenhouse site. And so the concept plans that Peter is going to walk through show conceptual development on those two sites. They're not any, they're not a, a plan that's being put forth by anybody other than us zoning consultants. And we're doing, we're showing the plan solely to use it to inform zoning standards. You're up, Peter.
So first off, we're going to start with the Knapp property, which is 19-acre parcel at 147 Main Street. A lot of people are probably familiar with the greenhouse complex at the front, which is really what you could see from the street, but then it goes way back and about the last third of the property is wetlands. Go to the next slide, please. So this is looking straight down with the orthophoto map. The white boundaries are the, the boundaries of the property. And north is facing up on the screen. So you can see the greenhouse properties and then as you go down away from Main Street, it gets, it sort of goes up a hill and then slopes down again into a wetland area. Next slide, please. This is looking a little closer and you can see the contour lines. And if you're familiar with reading those, you can see how there's kind of a, a ridge down the center of the property with a knoll, just where the big greenhouse is, and then it slopes down toward the rear. A lot of people, and one of our earlier workshops really identified this as a place where a lot of housing perhaps could go and you wouldn't really see it from Main Street and it's sort of sheltered on the backside of that hill. The next slide shows one approach to developing the site. And this is, if you did that 15 units an acre on about six acres for 87 units, this is sort of for the, for simplicity's sake, we're calling this the 90-unit plan. But basically, it's a collection of different types of buildings ranging from townhouses to apartments where you have multiple apartments on several floors to apartments with a center hall. And that sort of accounts for the different sizes of buildings. We want to point out that this is probably not, well, certainly not feasible without a separate wastewater treatment plant, which would be a considerable expense. And we'll talk more about that later. But if you go to the next one, it zooms in on sort of the, the north part of the site. One of the things we talked about previously is really trying to push the development back from Main Street so you wouldn't see so many buildings. And so we've created kind of an entrance that's sort of snugged up against the, the west, west side of the site, sort of the base of a curve where there's pretty good site distance from the street. This would curve up and around that knoll. We'd keep the existing house on the site, maybe expand it into either a mixed use or a multifamily building. And there's kind of an opportunity to wrap, as you see here, like five other buildings with some parking in between them, sort of around that entry park or, or green space. And this, pretty much what we're demonstrating here is trying to repeat the pattern that you see along Main Street with sort of large, sort of formally arranged houses facing the street with large yards and open space and not looking at something that looks like a multifamily building with a lot of parking. The next slide sort of shows sort of Southern Loop. Pretty much both the. Pretty much both the, the NAP site and the Dunn property, long and narrow. And one of the issues is how do you provide for public safety where you have to really provide multiple points of being able to turn around a fire truck and then be able to get back out the cul-de-sac without the cul-de-sac itself being too long. So that's why pretty much anyone is going to approach this by having a series of sort of small loops that provide for those alternative arrangements. But they also provide an opportunity to create kind of a focus for a little neighborhood. As shown here, there would, the loop is coming around a little green space that would be parking on one side that would serve the multifamily houses to the, to the right. The houses to the left are townhouses. So this is kind of individual houses that share an end wall. It might have parking inside on the ground floor. And then to the south are two larger apartment buildings. These, each of these are 16 units. They have a center hall, be two and a half stories. So wouldn't look hopefully not too far out of scale from a, a large you know, mansion or something that seems fairly appropriate for West Newbury. But still would accommodate a fair amount of new homes on a small footprint. So it's about a 60 by 80 foot footprint. And then a similar area would be required for the parking, which is shown and behind the buildings. So some of the principles, you know, we're experimenting with this, which you're going to hopefully be incorporated into the zoning. Trying to get the parking to the extent possible behind buildings. Between buildings. So it's not the thing that hits you in the face as you walk or drive through the community. To have a sense of focus with these small green spaces and park areas. To have attractive architecture that really shapes the public space along the street. And to have everything connected with sidewalks, which is shown in kind of that rosy pink color. So a continuous network of sidewalks that connects to everybody's front, front doors and links the different parts of the development. And then the whole thing heavily planted with a lot of shade trees provide for, you know, shade in an increasingly warm world, but also provide the kind of village setting that you know, we know and love in New England generally, and of course in West Newbury. The next site you've already seen, this is oh, this is the 40 unit plan for the same site. Sorry. So we're still on the, the NAP property. The previous one was a 90 unit plan. This one is a 40 unit plan with 90 bedrooms. And the reason we're showing this is that this is about as many bedrooms as you can build and stay under a wastewater capacity of 10,000 gallons. Once you go over 10,000 gallons under Title V, which is the state law governing septic systems and wastewater treatment, you have to build a much more robust and very expensive treatment plant. So there's a reason why in West Newbury as elsewhere, you have a lot of projects which are around this size, more like 40 units. Because it stays under that 10,000 gallon a day limit. But that also provides some opportunities for development under the MBTA zoning. As shown here, it's a similar kind of a long entry road where the houses are pulled back from Main Street and provides access to a cul-de-sac that's sort of over the top of the hill. If you go to the next slide, Dylan. This is then the front of that again with a, a park or green space along the street, an opportunity for maybe mixed use or other buildings along the frontage. But each of these structures is just a duplex. So it's two units that share a connected end wall. And parking is either in the units or in a small parking lot between the units. But again, trying to get the parking to the side and to the rear and really place the focus on an attractive street lined with trees and comfortable sidewalks. And then sort of continuing that traditional rural pattern of you come past an open space and then into a a sort of a neighborhood of houses and then back into the open space. If you go to the next slide, it sort of shows the large too far. There it is. Sort of a, a larger, in this case, a, a more coherent green. Because we don't have to provide any parking except for in between the units because they're just duplexes. So we have shared parking off of shared driveways in between the units. We have the line, the buildings kind of lined up in a formal way, again, repeating a very traditional pattern in West Newbury facing that what hopefully is an attractive green space. And then where opportunities exist, you can have buildings like on the, the bottom of the plan there that share a common driveway. And everyone has access both to an attractive neighborhood on the interior, but also looking out onto attractive open space on the exterior. So again, part of this is experimenting with ways of how do we create housing that, you know, meets the current demand for somewhat higher density, somewhat smaller units, but also something that feels like it fits into West Newbury. The next one is the, the Dunn site. Again, similar side. Well, this is 15 acres again off of Main Street with the greenhouses. Visible from the street and then a very steep knoll that hides the back of the property from Main Street. The next slide shows a view of that. And this is showing the, the whole parcel, but the part that's outlined in, in red is that six acres that would be subject to the zoning. So that if that's 15 units an acre, it's limited to 90 potential units. And then the rest of it would be set aside as open space. So the plan again is sort of a long loop and cul-de-sac providing opportunities for different kinds of buildings. The next slide. It shows some of the similar ideas of trying to have an attractive streetscape opening up onto some shared open spaces. And really the buildings then relate either to the, the streetscape or they relate to these open spaces or both. And that's really how you build a sense of place, how you build a sense of community. And again, connected with continuous sidewalk and trail system, parking to the extent possible in between the buildings, behind the buildings or under the buildings. As shown with those larger apartments. And really then this becomes the, the foundation for a series of design guidelines that can be incorporated in the site plan review standards. The next shows. Right. This is the final one, which is again a 40 unit plan. So instead of 90 units, this is 40 units, but spread out a little bit. Most of them is duplexes or triplexes. To go to the next slide. It shows some of the similar opportunities on, on that nap proposal to get some sort of sub neighborhood spaces, each with their own open space that they're facing, to put the parking between the buildings. Have garages that instead of facing the street, face to the side. So you see the attractive part of the house and not just the garage. And really get a sense of something which again, feels more like driving down a country road in West Newbury rather than something totally alien. Anything you want to add to these, Dylan?
I would just say that the, I think the main driver of why this plan looks more spread out than the other ones is because of the wetlands on the NAP site. So there are wetlands on, on both edges of the NAP site as well as in the back of the property. So that's constraining the developable portion of that, that site. And so to get that, those 40 units on the site, they, they get closer together and there's less opportunity for the shared open spaces. Like there are in the site. Okay. So I'm going to turn now to proposed zoning. So this is the proposed zoning map. Or a map showing proposed zoning districts. So we're calling the, the zoning districts, the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay Districts, otherwise heretofore known as the, the MICMOD, the MCMOD. And so this is showing two MICMOD overlay districts, one on the Dunn site and one on the NAP site. And an overlay district fifth on top of the base zoning. And it gives a property owner or an applicant additional rights if they opt into the overlay district. So everything that's allowed under the underlying zoning, the zoning that's there now is still allowed. But things change if you opt into the overlay district. So this both protect existing rights and create additional ones. So the overlay districts each have two sub districts. And we're looking for feedback on this concept from the planning board tonight. One of them, we're calling the, the MICMOD Neighborhood Sub District. And that's designated for multifamily use. And then the other is the mixed use sub districts. In both cases, that's up by the street. So it's basically the, the front portion of the Dunn site before you start climbing up the hill. Or the front portion of the NAP site, most of the developed area that's currently occupied by the greenhouses. The mixed, in the mixed use, they're essentially the same, other than the mixed use overlay district allowed mixed use. So it would allow a mix of commercial and residential use. We heard, you know, feedback at in the past that particularly at the Dunn site, it's close to the I'm sorry, we're, we're going to hold questions until the end. So if you are speaking to us on purpose, please hold your questions and otherwise please mute yourself. We heard at the public forum that there was interest in commercial use of the Dunn property. It's, it's close to the existing business district, which basically runs across the opposite side of the street, but doesn't include Dunn property. And then includes a portion of the Dunn property, but the portion that's up on top of the hill and basically is not very accessible. And then the NAP property, you know, has been in, it's been in sort of agricultural commercial use for a long time. So I think there's an open question of whether this makes sense for mixed use or not. Each of these overlay districts is approximately seven to eight acres. In order to fit the 90 units or the 40 units. With the units somewhat spread out, in the real world, the districts needed to be larger than the minimum of 5.8 acres to get the 15 units per acre. So these district boundaries are, are drawn based on those concept plans. As a practical matter, it seems unlikely, although of course possible, that someone would develop at MBTA density of 15 acres per acre. Because of the wastewater limitations, soil limitations in West Newbury, which make wastewater treatment plants fairly infestable. And they're just generally very expensive. So those are the two zoning districts. I'm going to, I guess one more thing to say here is these zoning districts are, are cutting the parcel into portions that are covered by the overlay and portions that are not covered by the overlay. So for example, the Dunn property, there's about eight acres that it's included in the, in the district. And about seven acres that are not included in the district, which includes the large open fields to the west. And then a portion that is relatively undevelopable to the northeast. And then on that property, there's about eight acres in the back. That's largely inaccessible due to wetlands and has a lot of overlapping constraints on it. They're not included in the district. And then about 2.1 acres of field up by the road to the east that's not included. So the idea here is to limit the area that's available for development under the overlay districts. But also to, the zoning allows the remaining portions of the property to be used for sort of accessory uses to the development. So stormwater facilities, wastewater treatment facilities. An open space, though not required open space, can be cited on the remaining portions of the district, I mean, of the parcel. So that's the idea there. I'm going to walk through, we've covered this before, but I'm going to walk through the basic standards of the zoning before I dive into the actual text of the zoning. Because it's going to get technical and dry and boring for everybody. So I want to have, cover the high points. And then if people glaze, glaze over, they can leave. So the basic dimensional standards for the district are a minimum five acre lot. Both of these lots are that size. You know, they're greater than, than that size, a minimum frontage of 20 feet. That's not really applicable unless an applicant decides to go through subdivision. And the reason that the frontage is set low here and so that townhouses can be developed along a street frontage, each on their own lot, should somebody choose to do that. We think it's more likely that multiple units would be on one lot. And so frontage wouldn't be meaningful. As front setbacks and side rear setbacks also wouldn't be meaningful, except on the boundaries of the parcel, the original parcel. Minimum open space of 30%. And then the zoning in its design standard sets up allowed building type. So two family, three to five family with a manor house or farmhouse matting, basically. Building that's composed of small masses that all add up together into something bigger. Looking like, looking like a farmhouse that's been added on to over time. There are many examples of in West Newbury. And then there are stacked flats, which is buildings that typically share a stairway. Often there are more entrances on the ground floor and the buildings are stacked on top of each other. It's a more efficient format than a townhouse. You get more units per building typically. And then apartments of eight to 16 units. So limiting the, the size, the total number of apartments in the building. The zoning, according to the law, can't limit the number of bedrooms or the size of units. But it appears it can limit the overall number of units in a building. The maximum height allowed is three stories. Buildings have to be a minimum of 15 feet from one another. The minimum space between buildings and the street line is five feet. That's sort of a proxy for a front setback, right? So the front setback applies. If somebody goes through a subdivision process, if there are multiple buildings on a lot, then this other requirement kicks in. And then a maximum length of a wall without a two foot change in wall plane is 40 feet. In other words, we're trying to get at forcing the matting of a building to be no greater than 40 feet in any length. Before it has to have a jig or a drag. All buildings have to have pedestrian entry, entrance facing the streets. Flat roofs are not allowed. And then roofs have to have some variation in them to make them interesting. The parking requirements are 1.5 space per unit minimum. Bicycle parking is required. All parking areas are required to be located to the side or the rear within buildings. But the planning board can waive that requirement when it's not feasible. And you'll, you probably, you may have noticed in the concept plan for NAP, the 90 unit plan, it just, it wasn't feasible to achieve that density and have all the parking to the side or the rear. Largely due to the wetlands I talked about earlier. And then garage door should be setback from the front of the thud by at least two feet. And can't occupy more than a third of the front of the thud. Okay. So those are the basic zoning parameters. And I'm going to stop sharing this presentation and start sharing a word document to just walk through. Okay. Um, the zoning is, it's about 20 pages long. But because it's indented so far, it's really only half of that. It's eight pages or 10 pages of actual text probably. So the zoning is, is formatted in the form that's customary for West Newbury. That's why it starts at section 8.4 and why it's indented so far. So section 8.4 would be, is proposed to establish that MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Overlay District. The first section there, 8.41 establishes the purpose as a typical for West Newbury. I am going to read these purpose statements just to Um, I am gonna read these purpose statements just to, you know, make sure we're all on the same page here. So to, the first purpose is to increase the supply of housing in West Newbury. The second is to increase the diversity of housing in West Newbury. So that it better meets the needs of people across age groups, household compositions and income levels. To ensure that multifamily housing minimize its harm to environmental, historic and cultural resources. To ensure that the design of sites and buildings for multifamily housing supports a good quality of life for occupants and abutters. And then there's some sub points there. Uh, to allow new homes and locations with adequate public infrastructure, including streets, sidewalks and water infrastructure. Um, these districts were chosen because they have public water supply. Um, and because they are on Main Street and so relative to other locations in West Newbury, they have um relatively adequate treats and sidewalks. To increase the municipal tax base through private investments and new residential developments. Um, that's not necessarily saying that there's a net positive fiscal impact from these units, though there may be. Because multifamily housing typically has far fewer children uh per unit than single family residential development. Um, but regardless of the net fiscal impact, new development is new growth for your community, um, which increases your tax base. Um, and to support the vibrancy of West Newbury Village Center by allowing new homes close to it. Which is uh something we heard a lot about in the second public forum we had um in person. Okay, the next section is is basically establishes the district. It establishes the the main district and the sub district. Um, and says that you can apply for to use the district. It says that it only applies to those portions of the of a property that are within the overlay, not the remaining portion. Which is different from how your base zoning works. Um, and then it says that the provisions in here supersede the underlying zoning. Then there's the definition section. Um, I've gone through your definitions and added those that are either necessary for this zoning. Um, because there are new terms or because there are terms that are used differently. Um, so there are a variety of terms in here that are designed, that are designated. These are all, that's all definitions. Then you get the permitted uses. Um, so there are permitted uses in the neighborhood sub district and permitted uses in the mixed use sub district. So in the neighborhood sub districts, district, you have multifamily housing. Uses better exempt for Massachusetts zoning act section three. Uses that are permitted in all districts. For section four point two of the underlying district. So a a a lot of the zoning proposal here is a lot of the text is to make the zoning work with the underlying zoning and a lot of it is either exempting things that are in the underlying zoning that don't work or um modifying things in the underlying zoning that don't work. So that's, that's a lot of what's in here. Though in this case, your underlying zoning establishes uses by right in the residential A, B and C district. And then used it by special permit in the A, B and C district. Um, so this section here is dealing with that. Um, and so it allows the uses that are in section four point two and it allows most of the ones in section four point three to accept the school buses, commercial vehicles which are unregistered or abandoned and bed and breakfast. Um, that's a judgment call. It's my suggestion. Um, obviously open to feedback, but I thought those were not particularly compatible with what's envisioned for these districts. In the mixed use district, sub district, um all the uses that are allowed in the neighborhood sub district are also allowed. And then mixed use development, which includes a mix of residential and commercial uses is allowed. Um, and the commercial uses are limited to retail stores or service establishments. Business or professional offices or banks, not including drive-in banks or standalone ATMs. Restaurants or other places serving food within a structure, not including drive-ins or fast food establishments. Um, that's a little big. I'm trying to make this visible, but hopefully I'll see it myself. Um, and then parking areas or garages for uses of employees, customers and visitors. The zoning then sets out accessory uses um that are allowed as a right. The other right thing is important, as I mentioned or should have mentioned earlier. MBTA community zoning districts have to allow multifamily by right. And so anything that compromises that um makes the zoning not comply with the law. So for example, if you allowed multifamily housing by right, but you had required a special permit for the parking that you're acquiring. That wouldn't work, right? Because nobody can actually develop the project by right. Um, so that allows allows um, surface parking, parking within buildings at the ground level or below grade. Solar panels installed over one or more parking spaces, common buildings for typical accessory accessory uses like maintenance facility, shared storage, shared community spaces. Um, and includes space for professional offices or customary home occupation. And then accessory buildings associated with mixed use buildings with some language that comes from your base selling. And signs. It then establishes use by special permit. Parking structures that um require basically more than one story. Standalone parking structures and the uses in section four point three three. There's a typo here. So I don't actually know what I meant there. Oops, that's the wrong button. I'll revisit that. Um, and then it says section four point three four doesn't apply to projects permitted under them stack McMod. And there's gonna be a lot, there's a fair amount of that sort of just referring out. And then there are dimensional standards. I already walked through these before. In in the presentation format, so I'm not gonna go through them again. Zoning allows multiple buildings on a lot. There are a variety of exceptions from those dimensional standards. Um, including exceptions to heights. For various reasons, including renewable energy installations on roofs. And then the next section says that some uses that are allowed as part of a common plan of development in the McMod are not, um, do not have the dimensional requirements of the of the overlay district available to them. So there are reduced dimensional requirements available through the overlay district. But there are some uses that you can, you can do through the overlay district, but you have to use the base zoning districts dimensional standards. Um, so those are include the exempt uses municipal buildings and and uses, one family dwellings, family daycare and boarding houses. The idea here is, um, these are things that are probably okay to allow and may mix well with multifamily. Um, but are not the main purpose of the overlay district and so shouldn't get the reduced dimensional standard that the overlay district provides. Uh, the next section deals with off-street parking. As I mentioned before, it's uh requires not more than one point five. It says you can't require more than one point five off-street parking spaces for dwelling unit. Um, and it's set the limit of not more than three parking spaces for dwelling unit. Except by waiver during site plan review. And it allows um on-street parking to be counted toward or required number of parking spaces with a waiver by planning board. Um, it allows shared parking and reducing the amount of parking for mixed uses. Consistent with, you know, best practices that requires an applicant to submit an app, an evaluation showing that. Um, then you get into bicycle parking. Um, and then finally, there's a provision here that says any of the regulation in the planning boards. Off-street parking and loading regulations that are not objective basically don't apply here because any any standards for the district have to be objective. The next section gets into exceptions from other sections. I'm not gonna go through these. There's they're basically technical. Um, and then you get into the general development standards, which are um, basically design standards. So they're the kinds of things that Peter described in his presentation. Um, so site design requires gesturing connection. Uh, requires a continuous network of sidewalks and pathways that provides direct connections between public sidewalks. Building entrances, bicycles, storage and parking, vehicle parking and any open spaces intended for common use. Does the curb cut should be minimized. Um, that parking and circulation should be organized to minimize impervious surfaces. Um, that site designs that arrange streets into loops are preferred over dead-end streets with cul-de-sacs. That buildings should be clustered into groups that share common open spaces. And there are standards for open spaces. All open spaces should serve a recognizable function. It should be clear whether open spaces are public or private, private for the use of things like fences, landscaping, relationship between buildings. If a dwelling unit doesn't have private open space, then common outdoor space should be provided for it. Um, and there are some description of where that could be. Then dealing with parking um, to be beside, behind or within buildings, except where it's not possible. Um, if parking is gonna be in front of a, next to a sidewalk, it should be screened up to a height of four feet. Talk some parking materials and garages as I described earlier. Then we get into plantings should be um not invasive species. You could go further here and it does say that species should be native or adapted to the region. Um, basic standard for lighting and then standards for screening and stormwater management. Next up are buildings, the building types, as I mentioned previously. Um, and then standards for how buildings should be arranged on sites that they should face streets or shared open spaces. They should contain an operable pedestrian entrance um that you can actually find and is prominent. And that is linked to a pedestrian, the pedestrian network. That all building facades visible from public right away or shared outdoor space should be treated with the same care and attention in terms of entries, penetration material. In other words, um, it's not okay to have a one nice side of the building and then an ugly side, um, that's still visible. And then there's a provision here for infill lots along existing streets. Uh, which basically said, so that applies to new lots along Main Street. And it basically says that the front setback should be the average of the adjacent, the setbacks of the adjacent buildings, plus or minus five feet. And that is the last design standard. Um, then there's a section on waivers. Uh, there's a section of unaffordability requirements, which refers out to your inclusionary housing requirements. The and then it, there's a site plan review section, which applies your site plan review section with some exceptions. Um, it modifies the decision criteria to make it really, really clear or more clear that disapproval is 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 disapproved of. So again, the development should be by right and you should only be disapproving um permits in extreme cases. Where you worked really hard with an applicant and you just were not able to devise conditions that enable them to meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw. More exceptions and then or uh requirement that projects or an allowance that projects can be phased, but they can't avoid the affordability requirements through phasing. And then the end. That's, that's the proposed zoning. I'm sure that was uh kind of dry to listen to. Um, so I'm gonna stop now and see if the planning board has any questions or comments.
Yeah, hi Dylan and Peter. Yeah, excellent presentation and and yes, uh, hopefully we didn't put everybody to sleep with, you know, the recap of the bylaws, which which will get much, you know, greater review by the board and 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 yourselves as we delve into these. We haven't, we've just seen this for the first time.
Yeah.
Terrific effort in uh developing this. Just a couple of thoughts on my end and then I'll hear from the other board members. I I am interested in the uh allowing some mixed use. You know, it's always hard in a small town like this with, you know, business opportunities and I I think we'd be remiss to not um consider uh that in these because they are on Main Street. So I I here tonight, I'm, I'm very interested in that. And I I do appreciate your limiting the areas of, you know, direct development. I think we talked about that in the past. Um, and and whatnot. So I'll, I'll just hear from some other board members uh before we before we open it up and hear public comments. Right?
Yeah, I'm wondering where he came up with that quarter of bicycle per unit uh for covered parking. Where where'd that quarter of a bike come in?
Well, it's just the front tire or the rear tire. Um,
You got to take one off. It's
No, I mean, is is experience showing that that's about the right ratio?
I looked at a couple of other bylaws that require um bicycle parking and that seemed to be the number that other people were using. You know, I'm a bicyclist, so to me, one made sense, but um
Yeah, although, you know, cycling in West Newbury has challenges. There's a, there's a number of pretty good hills, so you gotta be really serious about it.
Yeah, yeah. And so what that section actually says is that it it only applies if there isn't a garage space that's designated to the unit. So it's requiring covered outdoor or covered bicycle parking if there isn't somewhere else that's designated for bicycle parking, basically.
Now, I'm very grateful for the first uh cut at the regulations. I mean, I can, I can put on my uh my grammar hat and there's a lot of things to to update there. But it's great to have the first cut and I think you've got the general ideas I I like very much. Um, including the mixed use, Brian, and uh yeah, some of the other stuff seems reasonable. I I wonder about the exception for inclusionary housing and whatnot, but those are the sorts of things that we would hash out over time. And as far as, as far as the, you know, the examples of what could be done on these lots, uh, yeah, I think, I think those those look great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, Dylan and Peter, one thing I may think that uh some members of the public may want to know more about um either tonight or next week's forum. I think I know the answers to these questions, but just as a point of information, a couple of points. One is zoning doesn't speak to the nature of ownership of any uh units created, right? This is not, you don't know if these are condominiums or rentals or whatever. That would be up to the developer of the site, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, and the other thing that I think is worth maybe clarifying for folks is that um affordability as a thing is not addressed by this law. That also, am I correct in saying that? Yeah, an affordability component would come in, say with our um inclusionary bylaw.
Yeah, so this, the intent of the law doesn't mention affordability. Um, the compliance guidelines allow a community to require up to ten percent of the units to be affordable. To a household making not more than eighty percent of the area median income, which is what your current inclusionary housing requirements do. So your current inclusionary housing requirements have those same numbers. And they apply to anything, any residential development with three or more units or three or more lots. So I basically have just applied that. I'd say that applies here.
But you, you gave an exception to it where the planning board doesn't find it feasible. I wonder why, why you did that?
I did that because of the compliance guidelines. Have some nebulous language about how. You shouldn't make projects infeasible because of affordable housing requirements. And wow. So. So I gave you guys.
I would have a. Have a problem with that because if, if we allow people. To say that, you know, I just can't make the numbers work. With the inclusionary housing requirement. So therefore I want you to, to waive it. Then I, I think that essentially guts that and, you know, there'd never be any more application of that. Bylaw in the future for any development, not just here.
Yeah. So what I, the, the, what I tried to write in there and you can tell me if it's clear or. Strict enough. Is that the applicant has to provide an analysis that shows that that's actually the case. And you all. You know, through your site plan. Review are able to hire. Independent experts to review that, right? So. I, I think that's enough for you guys to, for it not to be gutted. You know, there have to actually be numbers that show that it really is infeasible. And your outside expert has to concur with that opinion. So, but it is, it's, it's, it's walking the line between. Writing it in there. So it's there and providing an, an out so that the state doesn't say. We don't really believe that. A three-unit development in West Newbury. Can support an inclusionary housing. Unit.
Yeah. Well, you know, when, when it's appropriate, we can have a, a longer debate on that. I mean, the, the whole concept. You know, is fraught. But, but there you go. We, we can, we can talk about this in the future.
Sounds good.
Think we want to hear if Tim has a comment or Deb.
You know, it was a good presentation and obviously the zoning bylaw regulation would, is very dense. So, you know. Wouldn't focus too much on that right at the moment, but I thought the conceptual plans, you know, they, they reflect very ambitious developments in these properties, which aren't huge. But they do show. The input that the community gave. And so I appreciate that, you know, particularly like in the design of the buildings and the layout of the buildings, things like that. To show that, you know, the community was listened to at these different sessions. So. I thought that was great. So there's a lot of work left to be done. I'm sure people have a lot of questions. And the details will be in the zoning, but that's all I have at the moment, Brian.
Okay. Well, thank you. I don't, I know Deb is still online, but she may have stepped away. So we'll. See, before we see if anyone in the public wants to comment. Sue, can you just give us some details about the. Forum next week, times and place, et cetera?
Sure. Thanks. And let me say there's also a forum this Thursday. And I, while Peter and Dylan and their team will not be there, I will be available. I will have some boards. I will have some. We're not the highlighted project this week. There are two others that are highlighted, but I will be there and I have a couple. Documents where I'll be asking for your inputs. So there's an opportunity to, for people to just kind of take another look at these. Plans a little closer up than, just as a preview for next week. So then next Wednesday from five, I think it's five thirty to eight. Is the forum that will be highlighting this project. Peter and Dylan and their team will be presenting. It'll be a good opportunity to have some back and forth, to have some questions, answers and have some. Some real interaction on inner. Activities that will solicit your input. So we're really looking forward to that. There'll be food and. Clowns and games. No, there won't be clowns. But there will be, but there will be food and it should be a good time for us to interact and to, to get into as much weeds as we want. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you. So yes, I think at this point, if any members of the public who. Are, are listening in and wish to. Have a question answered or. Make a point. Speak up or you can use the, use your hand function on here or you can. Not that, that many we could do. You could just speak up or you can wait and try and come next Wednesday. On the fifteenth and, and you can talk to us and Peter and Dylan. So anybody want to say anything? Not hearing anybody or seeing any comment in the chat. So, and that's fine. There's a lot, a lot to take in and, and sometimes these things are better in person. Hopefully you can come next week or. What, what is it this week? Thursday?
Thursday.
But the consultants will not be there. Sue is doing the whole, holding down the show.
That's right.
Okay.
I had one other question for the board.
Yes.
If you'll humor me. So my, my question is about, it's going back to Anne's. Comments about how zoning doesn't speak to ownership. And so. You have. Provisions in your bylaw now through open space. OFD or OSPD. I can't remember how you guys determine, how, how you describe that, that allow. I, I'm assuming are used to develop condominiums. To develop multiple units on a lot without a traditional subdivision. So. I was hoping you could just walk me through how that. Process works in terms of the relationship to subdivision. Because the, the bylaw says that a definitive subdivision plan has to be submitted. In addition to a special permit. So. I'm curious how that works now. When you have a condominium development where you're not actually subdividing into multiple lots. And how you want that to work. In. For this overlay district. In terms of the relationship between zoning and. Subdivision regulations. So what's written into the zoning is that. The design standards in the subdivision regulations. Will, are required and would. Be reviewed through site plan review. But the question is, do you also? Want people to go through. An actual subdivision process? For multiple units on the lot?
Well. I mean, there's. If, if you do a typical subdivision, I mean, that's, that's with the zoning that is currently existing.
Right.
And, and we often, well, in the few that we have, have. Approved the condo developments. You know, the, the, the developers, it was far more advantageous to take advantage of open space preservation development.
Right.
As opposed to a subdivision. And, and those lend themselves to condo.
Right.
Ownership. I mean, I, on, on the face of it, I, I'm not sure why we would want to see a subdivision plan. I, I don't know how you would. Set up an ownership of them. A subdivision ownership of those duplexes and whatnot. It just looks like it's got to be a condo arrangement. To me. But, you know. Maybe somebody else is more creative than I am. I, I think that will be the easier approach. For a developer. Other members?
Well, one of the things that drives it is the shared septic, you know, that drives the condominium. Situation that's a part of it. But don't we need something that will cover things like roads and drainage and all that stuff? I mean, that's to me what the subdivision. Applicability would be to grab those regulations and give us the ability to have, to use the standards that we have for those.
Right. Yeah. And so I'm, I sort of have incorporated those by reference in the zoning. My question is, when you have reviewed, probably, it's probably Follinsby Way or Lane. Did you? Was it purely through zoning or did you also? Review that through the subdivision regulations in some way? If anybody was on the board there now and remembers. The same question for Drake's Landing.
Yeah. Well, most of us were on the board. Good question.
So on both of those, you did have a, a consultant, a peer review. Yes? Did you?
Yeah, that, that would have been Meridian.
Meridian. Yeah. I could, I could look in there in the files. I'm quite certain that it would have been against the subdivision regulations, but. And of course, with the ability to waive. Standards that you didn't think were applicable. Or that.
Yeah, I mean. I don't, I don't think we had them. Do a full subdivision plan. We, we certainly referenced the roadways and drainage and whatnot.
I think the subdivision plan is to get a yield to find out how many.
Oh, remember those, those yield plans. Yes.
Plans to see how many. Could be developed on a particular site, but that's not in play at this.
Right.
Yes, because we have a minimum of fifteen units per acre.
Okay. Well, I guess I just, I want to call that out as something for the board to, to think about when you're reading the zoning is, you know. Is this going to adequately cover the kinds of issues that are covered in subdivision review? And is the approach of saying. The standards that are in the subdivision regulations. Are going to be reviewed through site plan review adequate?
So in other words, our subdivision standards, the default.
Yeah, I like, I like having them as the default. I don't think that you can. Properly say that you're going to take those into consideration during site plan review. I think site plan review is a separate. Has separate goals. But I think you can refer to. You know, construction requirements and whatnot. And have those required anyway. Like site, site plan review to me is, is, is not about, are you complying with these particular? Regulations. Site plan review is. A broader picture. Doesn't include those details. Special permits can include those details. And in both the Follinsby, in both of the other developments in town. Well, there's been several. Those have been special permits. And, and I think that's how we, we dealt with, with making sure everything complied. In the conditions of granting those special permits. And, and because of open space preservation development, you do need to get. The yield. Thing. And, and we've learned from, from that over the years to make that yield plan. You know, how precise it has to be. And once the yield plan number is determined, you don't go back and revisit it. But that's a separate issue.
Yeah.
That, that's the way I remember. I don't know. Ann and Brian have been around.
No, no, I think you're right on there, Ray.
Okay.
Yeah. So in this case, the site plan review. Is your method for determining that the. That the project meets your standards, all the standards in the zoning, right? It's basically going through and it's checking. Does it meet the standards and the standards need to be objective? So the development standards that are included in the bylaw. Should be objective. If any of them appear not to be objective to you, then flag that because they either need to be cut or revised. The, the subdivision standard to me seem to be fairly, they seem objective. And so to me, they seem like they're. In their text at least. Are. Legitimate for use, for use in site plan review. Whether it's okay to. Or out to them. Isn't another question, but you guys already do elsewhere in your bylaw. So I'm assuming it's okay.
This is, this is a new thing for me, right? This kind of development by right, because this sort of development. Hasn't been the sort of thing that has been by right in the past.
Right.
And I, I think it's just. I, I know that these things need to be reviewed. And checked whether or not that's. Now we can do that under a kind of a. For me, a new definition of what site plan review is. Or by some other mechanism. Yeah, I don't know. I'm still learning. Been on this board for over 20 years. I'm still learning. Yeah. I think it, but if the bylaw is, is written carefully. Then I think to comply with the bylaw. You'll have to meet these standards, which I think are objective. And you know, that might even fall to, you know, I mean, we would definitely have the town's interest protected by having our own engineer reviewing everything. I, I'm not sure that, you know. Complying with these specific details is the sort of thing that comes up in site plan review or just in the normal review and, you know, towns. Engineer kind of. Compliance, building inspector compliance stuff. But yeah, I'm learning. I don't know. This is new.
Okay.
The, the subdivision regs have served us well on, on these projects. And. You know, it, it protects the, the, the. Future homeowners or renters in, in, in a particular project. So. Yeah, I think, I think that if, as long as this. MBTA, you know. Legislation allows that. It, it, it works. It has worked for the town and I think it should be incorporated by reference and, and requirement. In, in terms of the, the constructibility and, and what.
I think the key for us, planning board members may be to understand that we need to think about a by right. Site plan review in a different way, as you were sort of alluding to, Ray, and say that, okay, it's, it's like reviewing a subdivision. And we already have those very objective criteria established and we feel comfortable saying yes or no with them. Likewise, the language that, that Dawson and Flinker are coming up with. Is similarly kind of ironclad and we just test against those things. And as long as the language is similarly clear, analogously clear. Then. It will be pretty straightforward to go through the process. Whether we call it site plan review.
Does that help?
All right.
Okay. Other, other comments? Oh, Mr. Baker. Yes.
All right. I, I read through the MGL on the, on the MBTA initiative, the, the law that. Follows all of this. And it says whenever possible. The housing zone is to be within a half mile of an MBTA station. Now that's. You know, that's not possible in West Newbury. But we seem to have chosen two lots that are as far as possible from the MBTA stations. In Northern Essex County. Is that going to cause us trouble in the future? As being non-compliant?
No, I don't think so. I mean, obviously. It's not possible for you to guys to have a. You don't have a transit station. So that's. Doesn't really apply to you.
But, but we could put housing a lot closer to the MBTA stations than what we're doing.
Yeah, you could. So there, there's what's called the compliance guidelines, which lays out additional regulations for that very, very brief law. And it includes sort of a. Some guidance on appropriate locations for MBTA zones. And we went through sort of a. We went through a, a planning process to identify these sites. we went through a a planning process to identify these sites, um, looking at potential sites townwide. And these rose to the top, and it was, you know, a legitimate planning process involving both G I S analysis and public input. Um, so I I don't think there's any risk of the state saying these locations are not appropriate. Furthermore, you know, there's another state program called Chapter Forty R. Um, and these locations would qualify for Chapter Forty R because they're an existing rural village, basically. At least the Dunn site is. Um, so I I think the sites are completely appropriate.
That'd also point out that the sites are on one thirteen, which minimizes traffic in our by roads or the town of West Newbury roads. And that that both sites really provide the most efficient way to get to an MBTA site via main roads.
Uh, I I beg to disagree, I think something off of South Street would be much more efficient, would would actually fit the spirit of the law and that it's the closest to the MBTA station in Newburyport, close to ninety five and on a very, you know, South Street, Scotland Road, a very well-built roads to handle large amounts of traffic.
Yeah, I I appreciate that, but um I I was pretty convinced by the analysis that they did going lot by lot, looking at the town as a whole and reasons why certain areas were taken out of the out of the mix.
I I would say I think the the one major factor, uh, Mr. Baker, is the uh lack of public water supply in in certain areas of town, well, large, several areas. But you, yeah, your point's well taken, I I I don't disagree, but you know, if if uh maybe someday we'll have, you know, a a a regular bus service that stops at these two places on one thirteen and gets you there, I mean. I don't know.
We 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 had that with the trolleys, but they've been gone for seventy-five or a hundred years.
You're right.
Let's let's put, let's put the trolley tracks back, man, it'd be cool, light rail again.
But but my other big objection is is this is spot zoning. Uh, we're basically giving a multimillion dollar gift to uh to one property owner. And traditionally, West Newbury has strongly avoided spot zoning, and and I think it's fundamentally unfair.
So, well, if I could jump in, yeah, well, real, or when this came out and and we were all in a kerfuffle here because we were, there were so many reasons why. One of the first ideas we kicked around was just make the whole town, just do the whole town. But the problem you run into is then you have the potential for developing a tremendous number way beyond the maximum number that we have to, we have to provide. So I, so I don't know how you do this without spot zoning. I agree with you, by the way, Mr. Baker, I, you know, I I'm not, I'm not fond of this whole concept here, but I I don't know how you get around it and and still have a reasonable restriction on the number of units that could be built by right.
Yeah, that that that, I mean, my concept has been, it, the only time I don't mind spot zoning is when it's on town property. And, you know, that that's why I thought the Mullins property was the ideal uh solution. Um, because it is, you know, if I've got to do spot vote for stop spot zoning, I'm going to do it on town-owned property that was acquired specifically for this purpose to to do high-density uh um housing, affordable housing for the town and try to hit the MBTA requirements, the uh affordable housing requirements, and provide something hopefully inexpensive enough for uh for our town workers and and our children to to have housing in town while they get established.
Yeah, I I might say I think the uh, there's a couple of reasons why that was taken off the table and uh one is that th- this would require, because it is municipally owned, um, that it it actually go up for sale to to a developer in in somewhat short order, and we 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 lose the control. Um, the the other aspect is that there's, there's a number of people that want to still develop that, but with what you just said, for town senior citizens, for something that's different than the intent of what the state is uh requiring us to do here. Um, and keep in mind that the state's regulation doesn't really speak to affordability. We we were talking about adding something with that, but this MBTA legislation doesn't really even speak to that. So for those reasons, the the uh, it was felt that the mullen was best taken off the list at this at this juncture. You know, the the two parcels we we are talking about here tonight, you know, they they could be sold next year and somebody put two or three houses on it, they they then they wouldn't even care about this. And 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 that then may leave the mullen, and maybe we would think differently and have to come back to the top. Um, but I think it gives us an option, and right now I I I, my opinion is that's that's a better course of us uh sitting here in November of twenty twenty-three. Future, I don't know.
I I'd prefer not to, okay, do one high-density to solve the MBTA, another high-density to solve affordable housing. You know, we just put through the ADUs to try to, there's three different solutions we're going to, we're asking the town to pass to solve a single problem, that a single well-designed solution on the Mullins property would solve all of them. Um, and I know the rec, that the town has been worried about uh this zoning law come having to be passed at the next town meeting. But if you look at the regulations, because because we're a, the the lowest level of the communities, our deadline, I thought, was twenty twenty-five, so we've got another year and a half to do this, which, you know, allows us to take it slow and find a solution for all of our requirements rather than doing this piecemeal.
I think I would reframe that as it's not a piecemeal approach, it's a multi-pronged approach to solving a very pressing problem, which is housing supply, including both market rate and affordable units. And different kinds of units for different kinds of people. Um, I also want to respond to the spot zoning comments, so a spot zoning is um it's defined as for the sole benefit of the property owner. And these districts are not being adopted for the sole benefit of the property owner. The intent is not to make the properties more valuable, it's to comply with the law and to increase opportunities for multifamily housing. So I I don't think at any point the town chose these properties because they wanted to give a windfall to those property owners. I haven't seen any of that in any of the record of any of the conversations we've had. Um, that's what spot zoning is. This is not spot zoning, they're small districts, but there's not spot spot zoning because they're not for the financial benefit of these property owners.
Right, and Dylan, if I could weigh in on that, my understanding of case law in Massachusetts is that where there is a rational planning process and a well-defined and public process of deliberation before the zoning goes into effect, which is what has happened here, um, then it's not spot zoning. So I think the fact that there is a a public and and clearly defined process that is going on, and we've looked at the whole town, we've identified these sites, uh, and we're continuing to go through that process, that there wouldn't be a problem in the courts, from my understanding.
Okay, um, so we've covered a lot of ground here tonight, have a lot to think about, and uh I hope everybody will attend next Wednesday's uh in in-person forum, and we can uh hash hash through uh questions and uh comments, et cetera. Sometimes it's a, that's a better forum for us, so. Okay. Uh, Peter and Dylan, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Excellent job again, uh, getting getting us to where we are here today, so I look forward to seeing you next week. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, yep. Okay. So, planning board members, it's not a good night yet. We have other business to attend to. Let's see, the next item with town planner report, oh, Sue, you're up.
Oh, boy. Uh, let me just bring it up and onto of.
Excuse me.
I think a lot of it is kind of a rehash of what we've been talking about, but here, let me share and just so I don't forget anything. You see that?
Yes.
Appropriate size, so this is just, so just, I keep this in there because I also share it with the select board and others so that they'll have an idea of what we're, what we're all doing. Um, so that's just a a summary of what we were doing tonight and what we're doing going forward. Um, I did want to confirm just that we did pass the ADU and non-conforming bylaws. We have already submitted this to the town, to the AG's office, um, hopefully this one will go through quickly. Um, the housing production plan, we did hold a virtual sub-regional meeting on October twelfth, and now we're getting ready to do a another in-person meeting, um, tentatively the second week in December. This is, um, I just want to put a note in that that's important for the planning board, the select board, to be updated on this because it in fact um requires adoption by these two boards of the town. And I will be sharing drafts as soon as that makes its way into a plan form. This is just in reference to the two the project, town projects fair and forums that we've talked about. Um, the one thirteen quarter improvement study is going to be one of the highlighted ones um this Thursday, along with the River Road Climate Change Resiliency Project, that's going to be the other highlighted one. Evergreen Farm on Ash Street, also got a thumbs up at town meeting, um, so that's going forward. Um, still a lot of work to do, including fundraising, but um is moving forward. And then I just wanted to kind of keep before you the potential future zoning amendments because your work is never done.
No, no, thank you.
So these are some of the things that we've spoken about in the past. Um, and I did reach out to our building inspector because we know he's trying to to clean up zoning to the best of his ability to keep it consistent and enforceable, and we'll see his the ones that he he's noted that he would um like to consider. I think he said he's fairly, could be ready with definitions um this year or by annual town meeting. Um, I think some of the other ones might need a little longer. But if there's anything in there that you want to put a particular um push on, we're happy to take a look at it. And one new one that he is anxious to at least start the research on is the battery energy storage systems, because it is does go hand in hand with our solar bylaw, um, and there is interest from from folks.
Good, looks good to me.
Cut it off, honestly.
No, no, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I I I think we're still stunned by the twenty pages that we have to digest of the uh MBTA bylaw, at least I am.
Small, small bites.
I'm I'm overwhelmed, yeah, wow.
Well, it's a little tough seeing something for the first time on a screen in a Zoom meeting, but I think
Yeah.
It's all perfectly comprehensible to to us as we go through our usual process.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, okay, uh, let's move into, uh, what do you have up here? I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is just the, um, I'm just getting ready for the correspondence.
I'm sure, we just zip through this, we, yeah, we got, we should get to the minutes, but let's zip through the correspondence.
Yeah, it's interesting, the Amesbury one has to do with an accessory dwelling unit by law, so it'll be interesting to see what goes with them.
By the way, shouldn't we be celebrating the fact that uh ours passed?
I think so.
I I have been celebrating ever since October twenty-third.
There you go.
Yeah, no, it was a, it was a good thing.
I'm really curious, I'm really curious to see how people take advantage of that going forward. It'll be interesting to see a year from now if if people have set some of these up now.
I know that two people have come in to to see Sam, to talk to him about it and ask him when they can come to him and.
That's terrific.
Or a permit.
I assume we got to wait for the attorney general.
It's advisable.
Yes, but as I said to some of you after the meeting, um, given the level of interest there was in this, I think it would be an interesting and also responsible thing for us to report back to the town, um, maybe in April and certainly next October about how it's being used and, you know, what the impact has been.
You know, it might be one of those numbers that's not too hard to keep track of and just
Yes.
include it in the annual report that we do.
True, yeah, just along the way, just by the way, there are three or there are.
Yeah.
Sam said he would track that for us, so we could easily do that.
Good, excellent, yes.
Okay, thanks.
There's a bill afoot for making the um making this a as-of-right um ability, you know, across cities and towns, across the state.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, you know, I I said at town meeting, we were ahead of our time.
Yeah.
You were right.
You're right again, no, you did, you did a nice job, Ray, you know, that went over really well, I I thought there would be, you know, a lot more controversy, but I think you headed off a good number of points.
Thank you.
And then this one is a legal notice for Groveland for a contractor's yard. Newberry, this was um.
Pretty dramatic looking.
But I'm an island.
Island there, yeah. Big stuff.
And that's it.
Okay, yeah, so let's uh get the minutes up for the October third.
Did I say, Sue, or you only work?
You did, and I've made those changes and.
Oh, awesome, thank you.
Yep, highlighted them in here, but I'll go back to the beginning. This is October third. Have you all had a chance to read over them?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't need to go super slow.
No, if anybody has a comment they wish to make, let's speak now.
So what you'll see in red was um Tim's recommended changes, there was the one who I didn't, there was two that I underlined that I didn't change yet because I'm not sure if if Tim suggested wording here, he thought it should say State Farm.
Who's working there, I didn't think he was living.
Has no stake in the property aside from their employee working there, so it's on here, it's unsure certain where there means, if there means at twenty-six Church Street, it's living there, which I, I think that's what it meant.
That, I think that was the intent that he's.
Well, why don't we say, why don't we say living at twenty-six Church Street?
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever.
That sounds great.
And I would just clarify, uh, the the Peter Nolan, while he is a resident, he is a director. And I would just clarify, Peter Nolan, while he is a resident, he is a director butter. Probably just put a butter.
Or he can just give his address, too.
Or whatever, yeah.
Usually we give people's addresses when they, don't we?
Yeah, I don't know what number it's.
Yeah, such-and-such Church Street, you know, I think we usually do. And then it all becomes clear that he's a butter and a resident.
I'll look up his.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you just take out that resident part then. Thank you. And then the other one was specifications. Planning Board members expressed confusion over several specifications of the special permit. I think, I think the word that Tim had suggested was qualifications?
Provisions?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Tim. What did you suggest, Tim? Application, I think he said.
Yeah, I thought the questions that we had were relating to the application itself and how that fit with the town's licensing requirements.
So that's about applications?
How about just putting in details?
Yeah, we're talking about his application, though, what he said on his application. Is that what the question?
Right, that's, I thought we had questioned about what was on the application and how it fit with the town's.
The town's regulations about, or lack of regulation, lack of clarity.
Because I don't think we had confusion over the, that there was a special permit required, but it was for this particular application.
Aspects?
I think this might be more than, I think there's more than one thought here. I'm not quite sure what to do with it.
How about, planning board members expressed confusion over details and none.
Were details?
Just, yeah, just details. And I wouldn't even say of the special permit.
No, because it's about a special permit.
There were, you're right, there were details about the whole thing that was confusing.
Yeah, I mean, it was getting down to the breed of dog and.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Our licensing is verified what that was then. It's a resubmission and not a, yeah.
Right. Yeah, this is still, yeah, it was still very confusing, you know, all this stuff about a business, which really had nothing to do with it. It wasn't a business application.
Right. Anyone else have any other?
Was, maybe it was, oh, no.
Item four here. I think you had brought up that this was an alternative way that we could proceed when we first started talking about the two-thirds vote requirement.
Yeah, that needed some clarification, so I changed that, too.
Okay.
Okay, everybody happy with that? Move to approve the minutes as amended for October 3rd. Do we hear a second? Okay. Oh, in favor, Brian Murphy, aye.
Frank Cook, aye.
Dean, aye.
And Corin, aye. I don't know if Deb is online.
Confused. I don't see her.
No, so the motion passes 4-0. The approved minutes, I should say. Sue, do you have any administrative details you need to?
Did you want to, did you want to go over the meetings of the seventh, the minutes of the 17th?
I don't think, seen those before.
Oh, I beg your pardon then.
No.
It's okay, but I don't think they were sent.
Okay.
But we can just do it if it's quick. Do we want, or do we not want to do that in real time? We can wait.
Yeah, it's not too.
Why don't we just wait? I wasn't there anyway, but that's up to you folks.
I think we should have Deb's input on this.
Yeah, let's wait.
Sure.
But they do need to be sent.
Okay.
Hey, it's just down to us.
Yeah, I had spoken with Sue earlier today. Just wanted to get the sense of the board. You know, as we just spoke about correcting the minutes on October 3rd about the kennel. What do you think if we send a general note to the Select Board and just say, you know, it might be good to put on your to-do list an update, a review and update of the kennel requirements or kennel matters in the town regulations?
Yeah. Yeah, it struck me coming away from that, that if you have more than three dogs, you can apply for a kennel license instead of licensing the dogs individually.
Yes.
And it doesn't say anything about actually running a kennel and what the implications are, you know? And does this mean that if somebody has five dogs, that they need some sort of permission from the town to do that? I mean, that didn't come out.
Yes.
Very confusing. I mean, I think the town clerk was relying on zoning matters, which maybe were not really the purview of the town clerk, but it's unclear.
The one thing is how you license your dogs. That's fine. You got an option, great. But the other thing is, so what? You know, what does, what does this actually mean?
Right, and no one says you can't have six dogs in your house, you know? I mean, just because you have a structure for them, yeah, I think it's all very murky.
It is murky, and I suggested to her, I was impressed with the, I spoke twice with the Animal Officer, Kayla McDonald, and she does the Newbury Port as well. I think, you know, getting her expertise to help bring some clarity to the the town bylaws would be helpful for the future.
Yeah, not just, not just helpful, but, I mean, a key because.
Well, yeah.
You know, I mean, she, yeah, I mean, she knows, she knows what problems you can run into and what sort of things should be in a bylaw to make her job easier and make it better for everybody.
Yeah, I think, so I, I'll ask Sue to draft something. If you would all like to read it, that's fine. Otherwise, I think she can, it's just, we just want to, they should put it on their list, and I know they have a long list, but.
And why are we picking on dogs? I mean, what if you have cats or guinea pigs or, you know, many horses, you know? I mean.
Well, we might seek some input from Sam, too. He's been kind of a go-to guy on bylaws, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Because he's the one who ends up with enforcement.
Yeah.
Just of the zoning part of it, so, yeah.
Yeah, and actually, yeah, Kayla said she can only enforce.
Like cruelty.
Cruelty things, although they may be trying to change that at the state level, but but it's, yeah, so I'll, I'll work with Sue and craft a nice little note. I'm sure they, you know, they'll want to jump right in on this.
Well, and it may be comprehensive. It's licensing, which is the clerk, town bylaw, which is the Select Board, and clarifying the zoning to make sure that we're not talking about a structure, but rather the use of a structure.
It was very confusing for everybody.
Yes.
So it's a comprehensive look, I think.
Yeah, so, good, okay. Good, thank you all.
Yeah, and then we'll need to come back to it, too, because the fact that it is in there as a use, you know, as a potential use through special permit in the town, that to me indicates that, you know, I mean, what is it that would make it inappropriate?
Well, it's the business aspect. I mean, you know, like, it was pretty clear with the frisky dog. It's a, it's a business.
But that was different. That, no, that was a different thing altogether. That was a doggy daycare. They said we're running a business. They want to have traffic signs, buildings.
They came under the kennel provision, so to speak.
Partly, partly it was the, it was a, you know, occupation. It was like a, right? It was, I don't know.
I guess.
All I'm saying is it's, it's clear by the fact that it's actually in the bylaw that it can be an appropriate use in a residential area.
Yes.
So now I think we have to get our act together somehow and figure out, well, what makes it, what makes it a good use, an acceptable use?
Right.
And in a lot of ways, you know, an individual guy running dogs back and forth, that's less upsetting to the neighborhood than having a doggy daycare.
Yes.
Doggy daycare seems to be working out fine.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah.
Right.
So.
Right, right. Yes, it's got a lot, there are a lot of moving parts to this one, surprisingly many.
Yeah, I, you know, I mean, I was relieved that we didn't have to, you know, have more discussion and all that kind of stuff. But, I mean, in the end, we're just, we're just sort of kicking the can down here. Because, I mean, I was conflicted. Obviously, the neighbors didn't want it.
Right, but we didn't have anything good to hang our hat on one way or the other. So that's where fixing the regs comes in.
It's a start.
Yep. Okay. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add, other topics, whatever? Okay. All right. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
See you on Thursday.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, Brian, aye, yes. I don't think I can be there this week, but I will be there next Wednesday.
I for both.
Yeah, good. Thank you all.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.